All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at seven twenty-four. In accordance with the open meeting law, the board states for the record that this meeting is being recorded by NOR Cam and may be recorded by other local media. We're also being recorded on Zoom on our online platform. You could rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Welcome back, everybody, to in-person. This is an interesting little hybrid meeting we're having tonight. And so we're going to get right into things and we're going to go to public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment? No, and anybody online, Mr. Gilberto, that wants to speak for public comment? Seeing none?
I'm not seeing any.
All right.
I don't, I don't know. I have a feeling Mr. Magazin may be here to speak on an issue that's not on the agenda, so he may wish to speak on.
You want to hit continue on the screen mic so we can get that. Maybe it's a chat. You have like multiple computers.
All right, we're just going to be patient as we figure this.
Figuring it out.
Figure this out. Oh, I see. Is there a chat? Is there a hand raised in the chat?
Yeah.
No, it looks like. Those are my cell phones.
I'm getting a note that there's no sound.
Oh.
Mr. Magazin, can you hear me?
I can.
And we can hear you as well.
I can, we, I can cut down there five minutes, but it made a difference.
We can.
Were you here to speak? Do you provide public comment to the board?
Is this the right point in the meeting, what, for this?
Yes.
I'm intending to get an update on the process we started prior to COVID on the, uh, the end.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
At year seven, for year tonight to, uh, get an update on the process we started pre-COVID. Um, I've been waiting a long time to, um, purchase, um, town, town land so that I can build my own house and, you know, I have to watch there, but this works a lot better with the town on land. And, um, that's what I'm here for.
Okay, so you were just looking for an update. You weren't here to provide public comment? You were just asking question about something?
I, I didn't see it seem where it was on the agenda for tonight, so I guess this is the point that I bring it up.
Okay. It, it isn't actually on the agenda for an update, so.
Okay, so what, what time is it on the agenda?
It isn't, no, it isn't on the agenda, but we can still note your comment about that you're making an inquiry about where it's at in the process, so.
Okay.
You okay?
Very good.
All right, okay, thank you.
Just as a follow-up, Madam Chair.
Sure, Mr. O'Leary.
Where are we at with the, yeah, this was up on Poplar Terrace, I think, in that area? Old Land Road or Poplar Terrace?
Yeah.
So where are we in the process? Not just on this one, but I, the board took positive action on putting town land up for sale prior to COVID. Um, and I understand how quite delayed.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, of course, right, so you understand why it's delayed.
I mean, if you're looking for an update to say we've reinvigorated the process, you're not going to get that update, and neither is Mr. Magazin, because we haven't done anything in terms of auctioning land off, so. But what I think we can do is have it as an agenda item in an upcoming hearing, and especially the ones that we took action on, um, that we can move forward in the process. We can provide an update at the next meeting, or if there's anything further. I don't even know if you prepared, Mr. Gilberto, to talk about it, but, um, clearly there were, there was a halting of a lot of things during COVID.
So, I understand, but again, the door, the board took positive action on some specific parcels that were over.
Sure, we can take a look at that then.
So what, what, uh, what do we provide?
We can take a look at that list again, Mr. O'Leary. Where we're at in the process is your question?
Well, let me ask it. Yes, where are we at in the process?
I think you already did ask it.
And then what is the timeline associated with when we can give these people an update as to when the action's going to take place?
And I'm not sure if they've, if you have updated them on that, Mr. Gilberto, or even if you're prepared to update the board as to that process. And if you're not, we'll put it on an agenda for another meeting.
Madam Chair, through you. So there were a number of parcels that were approved for auction pre-COVID, um, as we've just described, or has just been discussed. Um, there were also parcels where the board desired to see that adjacent town and land be included in that. And my recollection is that some of that is not yet authorized for auction. So our intention is that the agenda, at an agenda which, during which time will allow, go through all of those with the board and review which ones need to be coupled with another parcel to be sold. And I'm not, I'm not even certain that this is one of those, but my recollection is it may have been. Um, but our thought was to put on the, the general issue of the town on land and to clarify all this and take the appropriate action moving forward after that.
Sure.
There were two parcels that were auctioned back in October, November. I'm sure the board remembers. Those part, those were parcels where we had directed the owners to draw a plan, go to the planning commission, expend money. We wanted to make a hole on that. You know, these are obviously important requests, but we're not quite at that point in the, in the process. But I think our hope, Madam Chair, through you, is that we could have it on the agenda for June twelfth, assuming there isn't anything else that.
Sure.
July twelfth, excuse me, thank you.
June twelfth of next year might work too. No, that would be great, and that's why I don't mean to put you on the spot, which I feel like this is doing, because, because we don't have it on the agenda. But I don't mean to put you on the spot, so I appreciate your update on it, but we can certainly address it at the next meeting and go over those. I don't even remember the addresses of those parcels. I believe that was pre-virtual meetings.
It was.
So long ago.
Yeah.
So I don't, my memory isn't that, is not going to be that far back on it, so.
Madam Chair, through you. I see Mr. Magazin's hand has gone up again.
This started over three years ago, and we're at, at the final step. And, uh, town, town went to their attorney to modify the, uh, thing at the end. You know, not, not for nothing, but during COVID, you check my taxes on my piece of land that was well under a thousand dollars, to now like forty-five hundred dollars a year. So now I'm sitting on a piece of land that then I've spent two, two years at nine thousand dollars for, you know, which wasn't that pay before. So, you know, I, I own, man, that, I'm just sitting, I'm waiting for the county. And we started this process, we engaged an attorney at that time, and now we're, this is here.
All right. I, I think Mr. Magazin, in, in terms of answering yours and Mr. O'Leary's question on the, where we're at, I think what we are planning to do is review everything at the next board meeting, the next upcoming meeting, because we have to evaluate and examine not just this, but the other parcels. But yours sums to me like, even though I don't remember this very well, it moved forward, it was moved forward in the list of parcels that was approved for sale. But we would, I, I don't have, um, a recollection enough to knowledge of us speak about that at this point, nor is it on the agenda this evening. So we'll put it on the agenda for that review for our next hearing, um, excuse me, next meeting. Okay? So, thank you. Good. Is there anyone else, Michael, that, Mr. Gilberto, I'm sorry. Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't see any.
All right. And so we want to move on to our next order of business now, which is a proclamation, lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month. And there is a motion in the packet to be able to read the proclamation. And if we could, if we could at least take that motion, and I'd ask Mr. Wallner, if, if the board approves the reading of the proclamation, I'd ask Mr. Wallner to read it for us, since he was instrumental in bringing this item forward to the board. A little deviation from the norm, so. Mr. Gilberto, is there anything you want to add in terms of this agenda item?
No.
All right. So do we have, how about we start with that motion?
And then I have one question.
Sure.
Do you want me to ask the question?
Deliberate the motion.
Okay.
Sure, sir.
Madam Chair, I'm moved to proclaim June 2021 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer Pride Month in North Reading, and to read the attached proclamation.
So good.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, discussion. Mr. Studo?
I just had a question. In general, just, this is not even relative to this, but, um, how, um, how often do we do proclamations at the town level? I'm just not familiar with that. Meaning, is there a criteria we hit?
Um, that I think we'd, I'd have to turn to the TA on.
Madam Chair.
If you have any information with regard to that.
To the best that I can, I can answer the question. Um, we generally, you know, if I had to estimate, I would say four or five times during the course of the year, we do some sort of a proclamation, maybe more. And it depends upon whether it's for a particular local event or declaring a month for a particular purpose. Candidly, I'm not aware of any criteria, but candidly, I've not reviewed closely the board's policy or any bylaws to see if there's any criteria that are out there.
I'm pretty sure the last one that we did is of what was stolen for scholars. Prior to that, we did a senior proclamation.
Sounds good.
Prior to that, I don't remember what we did prior to that.
We've done North Reading night off as well, as well, when we've done that. The last one being two years ago, I think.
Okay. So if there's like a, like on the monthly one, so if there's like a group or cause that North Reading wants to support, right, something like that? Is that what I mean? I'm just trying to get clarity, meaning that, you know, I just didn't know what. Again, if there's no criteria, that was my just main question. Like, you know, right? Like there's North Reading, by the way, I'm, I'm making an example now because I'm Italian. But there's North Reading, like declared Italian-American month, just like the federal government does. Meaning, if somebody wanted to do that, do we automatically say yes? Or do we say, no, there's not enough people that want it? That, that's my kind of question. I just didn't know what. So you answered it, though. So there is no criteria, just whatever the board's pleasure is when it comes up.
I would just caveat that by saying I have not reviewed the board's policy with regard to this, and so I, I just, I can't speak to that part of it.
Let's answer it.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question.
You suspend that one.
Have we ever done a proclamation for the veterans?
Um, I believe we do for Veterans Day, if I remember correctly. I don't have that in front of me, and as some of you know, I had a massive computer problem heading into this meeting this evening. Um, but I, I know that the veterans agent asked us to approve, to consider a proclamation in recognition of Veterans Day. I don't, I don't recall that it says month, but, um, I know we are asked for Veterans Day at least.
So I mean, I'm just, I'm just going to make a personal statement for myself, um, because my aunt is a veteran and a gay woman who I highly respect. And I had a conversation with her a while back, so I called her today. She lives in Alaska. I had to wait until the time was right, um, to discuss this. And because my feeling is, I would really like to see a Veterans Month before any other month. Um, if they don't have one, I don't really feel real good about supporting anything else before that. Happy to support a day, because that's, they have a day. Um, but a month, I'd like to see the veterans have it, and that's just personal for me.
Any other questions or comments, or, I don't know, speaking from the chair? I don't, I, you know, I appreciate that. I just don't necessarily think it's dispositive of how we should vote on this proclamation. I think it's, um, I think we have a veterans department that's devoted to veterans.
And I'll work on that. I'll work on that.
I think it's a great, I think it's a great idea if we, if we can, you know, research even months or weeks that might be devoted to veterans issues. I think that that's a great idea. We should get behind that. We have, we do have a department that, you know, we, we do devote town resources to veterans, and we try as a board, we try as a board collectively to, to devote resources and more resources if we can. So I think that's important. But I also think it's important for us to take this in and make these types of proclamations, especially in our community, to be a more inclusive community. And I think this is an extremely important one. I don't know if anyone else wants to speak about that as we deliberate, whether or not to approve reading of the proclamation. But I think it's, it's important for us to do this as a town. And, you know, that's just my, that's my opinion.
And I agree.
For us and representing the citizens of North Reading.
And I agree. I, if it were, and if it's a day, just like veterans have, I will wholeheartedly support it. And having that conversation with my aunt, she felt the same way. I ran it by her, I wanted her opinion. She felt the same way as a veteran. She feels that. That should come first.
Anything else, Mr. Studo?
And I will add, like, so, um, I'm in support of this. Again, for my generation, this is second nature. It's, it's just, you know, we grew up with, like, this wasn't a, not, this just wasn't something I had to be concerned with, because like, we were just already, I guess I just was part of a generation that accepted, it was just, you know what I mean? It's second nature. You had friends, everybody, so we didn't need this per se. But I will say from, from my cynical standpoint on proclamations in general, I just don't want someone to come out of left field and take advantage of us and say, hey, because you approved this, you better approve that. So that's what I'm just saying, that because we do live in a tit-for-tat world. So I'll just add that. And again, like I said, when I see this, it's like, so I'm just proclaiming something that I've already believed in forever, just because, again, I'm not trying to call myself the youngest one on this board.
Well, like you always do.
You know, so, I always do, so, but that's what I'll, I'll stay with. Thank you.
And, and, I don't know, is it any other comments, questions, thoughts? Good? Yeah, Mr. O'Leary?
I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I'm glad that we're able to bring it forward, and I appreciate the opportunity to, um, to take a vote on it. And again, this isn't something that the town of North Reading is necessarily coming up with. This isn't novel. Um, federal government takes positions on these things and proclaims certain months and certain other organizations, you know. And I don't necessarily draw a correlation between the veterans and this particular organization. Again, veterans, we, we provide a significant amount of resources throughout the year here in North Reading.
As we should.
Veterans Day is a national holiday. Um, and again, you know, if you want to proclaim November, because Veterans Day falls in there as a Veterans Month, I'm, I'm glued to that too. Uh, but I think in this particular case, in this particular proclamation, I, I think it's timely, I think it's necessary, and I think it helps put an exclamation point after an issue. So I, I think it's a great idea, and I look forward to supplying.
Okay. Anything else? All right. So we have a motion, and we have a motion by Mr. Studo, a second by Mr. O'Leary, all those in favor.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's unanimous. And I would ask, because Mr. Wallner was really the one that was instrumental in drawing this, um, matter to our attention.
I was in a.
Mister?
She was opposed, so it's not unanimous.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought I heard, I didn't, I didn't notice it. Okay, sorry. Okay. Four in favor, one opposed. I apologize for that.
I accept your apology.
Um, and Mr. Waller, would you please do the honor of reading a proclamation for us?
Sure, happy to. Lesbian, gay, bi, trans, queer Pride Month proclamation. Whereas, we recognize June 2021 as Pride Month throughout the United States and the world. We're reminded of what makes our community great, our remarkable capacity to accept and embrace the lives of others regardless of our differences. In this regard, we stand together with lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community as they declare their pride in who they are and whom they love. The LGBTQ community, sorry. Could you, could you, could you continue, please? Thank you. The LGBTQ community has worked tirelessly for respect, equality, and their very right to exist. While there has been remarkable progress towards acceptance and equality in recent years, members of the LGBTQ community still face an unacceptable level of discrimination. We must push back against those who threaten LGBTQ people, and we must continue to make the case that all human beings share something fundamental in common. All of us want to love and be loved. Therefore, be it resolved, we are proud to support our LGBTQ community, community's right to live in their, live their lives out loud. We celebrate pride, we must continue to demand equal rights for all. Therefore, be it further resolved, the select board members do hereby proclaim June 2021 to be Pride Month for the LGBTQ community in North Reading. And therefore, be it further resolved, we encourage all residents to celebrate our pride and diverse LGBTQ community through parade decorations and moral support that reflects well on our town and support of our LGBTQ neighbors. And we recognize LGBTQ residents whose influential and lasting contributions to our neighborhoods have made North Reading a vibrant community in which, in which to live, work, and play. Signed, Catherine Manupelli, Chairperson Select Board. Proclaim this the 21st day, June 2021. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you to both of you for reading it. And you did, there, there was a parade sponsored, two that happened. I forget what day.
So you signed that and then put a.
I know, this is.
She'll give it back to me.
She'll give it back. You don't have a pen?
Oh, you don't have a pen?
I do, I do.
I have to maintain order here.
She's got it.
And, um.
May I talk? Yeah.
Okay. Right on. Sorry, too many things on my desk. All right, so thank you for that. And any other, any further comment? Any further discussion on that?
Just, the parade was a great turnout. There was lots of supporters. And there was a request for a flag raising as well, but we don't have the, um, the equipment to be able to do that. So I think the offer of the town is if anybody wants to bring out some colored lights to the gazebo, we could entertain them. They should go to town administrator.
Correct.
And we do have a policy on flag raising to that point.
Oh, okay.
That is, is pretty specific in particular with regard to what, you know, flags. We have two flags, the American flag and the Veterans Memorial flag, and a specific policy on that, so. But again, the, the thought was, just like the blue lights were all on the gazebo, that perhaps rainbow, because rainbow is symbolic of gay pride, that perhaps someone could come forward and we could put, we could add through the town administrator with rainbow lights. I don't know if they make them, but I'm sure they could.
Sure, they do.
A few colors would go a long ways.
Sure. So that would just be a nice, another nice symbolic gesture.
Probably could even get them light up, rainbow.
Yes, yeah.
And this is the support of people who don't want to support.
Yes.
High school and.
Yes.
Yeah, and for the record, I was all for a day, just not a month.
Okay. So, and then we're going to expect to see something from you on veterans.
Yes, you will.
We're all for that as well.
Yes, so.
Okay, thank you for your thoughts and.
And I will, I will just say, I'll just make a final comment, because I often have middle schoolers, sometimes high schoolers who don't yet drive their own cars. But this is like Mr. O'Leary's entirely. It's important for us to do it, because as, you know, as far advanced, so to speak, as we think we might be, you know, even the older ones on this board.
I never call anybody old.
There's a lot of undercurrent in this town that we might not be in tune with that your, our children bring up to us. And this is one of those issues where I think it's very important for us as the representatives of the town to stand forward on this. And I don't necessarily think every single one of these issues that, you know, comes forward is something that the citizens of the town want us to stand, stand up for, but I think this is certainly one that they do. So, so thank you to.
Will sit.
All right. So we're going to move on to our 2021 youth core measurements survey results. We have our, you know, superstar Amy Luxwoods here, who can tell us a lot about the youth in the community and where they are at. So we're happy to hear from you. Welcome.
Thank you. Shall I just, I do have a PowerPoint today.
Madam Chair, through you to NOR Cam.
Can we hear?
Yes, she has a microphone that's laid in front of her. If I could just remind you to just speak up, because.
Sure.
The Zoom participants need to hear through that speakerphone. And Phil, you guys are going to Zoom in on a screen for the PowerPoint presentation.
Oh, no, we're actually, PowerPoint, we have it.
You have it, you're good.
Yeah, we're good to go.
Awesome.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. As you all know, every year, as part of our Federal Drug Free Communities grant, um, we take measurements about how youth view drugs, use drugs, and other attitudes related to substances. Um, we are in our fifth year. I can't believe how fast that went by. We have just three months left on our federal, federal grant. This flew by. Um, I'm sure Mr. Camaro updated everybody that we did submit a renewal. It'll be valid for five more years if we get it, but we don't find out until August. Um, one of the significant changes that happened in this year was that our grant was transferred to the CDC under the Prevention Department. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that, because there was some administrative changes that came along with that. So we are happy to report some really great news tonight. And so this is kind of the culmination of five years, but maybe a little bit more, more than that, because we had to take some baseline data back in 2017. So, um, every year, we approach grades six through 12 and partner with the school committee and the school administrators on collecting this information. So that's what I'm here to report back to you today. Um, and the number one question I got asked during COVID was, are kids using more or less during COVID? And I'm here to answer that for you today. Because before, I would just say, I don't know. I don't see them, I don't know. There's no way for me to know that until we get this information back. So, um, it, it's been a real interesting set of data. One thing I want to point out is that you'll see the participant level down in grade 11. And that was because the high school administration decided to, um, collect information just on one of the upper grades. They have assured me that next year it'll go back to full participation. Um, so those two people who, those two juniors who responded, thank you. But unfortunately, it's not valid, valid data for us. So on the information that I'm going to report back to you, just keep in mind the, why that's going to be right is, because for us, that's obviously not statistically valid. So let's start with alcohol use. And I did want to put the graphics right up there with the data, with the, um, the data set. And you'll, you'll see a trend down. This is a really big deal for us. Um, one thing I want to point out is that, as I mentioned, in 2017, when we started this, we did collect baseline data. But you don't see that represented there, because the method for us collecting that information, uh, to me, honestly, it was apples to oranges. It was a paper to pen collection. And so what I really wanted to do was apples to apples. Although we can blend in that 2017 data, I really, it was important to me that we look comparatively. And so the other reason that you don't see 2020 is because obviously 2020 didn't go so great, although we did collect, um, information across grades six through 12 in 2020. It was collected in April of 2020. Again, the response rate with the kids at home, um, online, it was not statistically valid. So I don't even have the 2020 numbers in there. Um, that didn't negate any sort of credibility for us as terms of the federal level, because we only really have to do this every other year. I think it's important, though, to keep our finger on the pulse and do it every year, because the second you take your, your foot off the pedal of prevention, things go awry. And so we do collect this every year. So I'm happy to report 2021 saw our lowest average, average levels of alcohol use down across all grades. Um, the one thing I will mention is that, oh, excuse me, up in eighth grade, though. I want to point that out. Um, again, we're hoping this will stay on trend come 2022, because, again, this is with kids not out and socializing the way that they normally would. Um, parties, events, celebrations did not quite happen the same way. Um, to be clear too, this only asks about past 30-day use. I do also ask about past year use. I didn't bring that tonight, but that is something we look at. So past 30-day use from the date of, of asking the question.
To that point, though, Amy, if I could.
Yeah.
Even though they weren't going to parties, I'm pretty sure all the adults had more alcohol in their house that they could have gotten.
We got, we got quite a bit of reports to the Coalition on that, including social media posts sent to us anonymously. I should be clear, the Coalition has no enforcement, and alcohol, adults can do what adults do. But, you know, there's definitely a casual attitude among alcohol use in this town. This is something we've tracked across multiple years. It leads from the perception of the youth. So the youth report to us that they see adults seeing alcohol use as not a big deal. And that's, and we've seen that across all years collectively. So. Marijuana, as we know with legalization, we, we expected increase in use. Again, this was down in correlation with 2009, compared, excuse me, against 2019. I did expect, well, I expected this to be a little bit closer, to be honest with you, because of legalization. But again, access was incredibly difficult. We know that the number one source of marijuana for youth is via the internet and social media. And so that engage, that engagement of actually having to go and picking up your product still didn't happen as much. Prescription drug use, this is something that is the most deadly as we know. Down again, and I'm just very happy to report that. The way that we phrase this, I guess, this question all the time, the way that we phrase this is prescription drugs not prescribed to you by a doctor or a therapist? So for example, if you were taking your best friend's Adderall or Xanax or Oxy, that would be what we're looking at here. Vape use. This is something that you know in this, in this body here, certainly that we've been targeting this significantly. And it is awesome to see the results of that go down. Again, with the grain of salt, being a crazy year. But that's something that we really purposely locked our, locked in on, our focus. And I'm very happy to report that with the administration's support, starting next fall, the School Resource Officer and I are going to be getting into fifth grade to talk about vape use, which is the first time you've ever been able to do that and had that access. Over COVID, Detective Lucci and I became trained in a program called Catch Your Breath. It is science-based curriculum to prevent vape use. And we are going to be delivering that to all fifth graders across the district. I'm very excited about that, starting in October, I believe. So this is the one that was really interesting. Tobacco use went up a little bit. And when I say tobacco use, this is categorized as conventional combustible cigarettes, chew, spitless chew, anything that you put in your mouth that is not vape, basically. And we were expecting this. So we partnered quite closely with the New England Tobacco Specialists in the region, and we were expecting this number to go up. To be honest with you, probably even a little bit more, we thought, because what's been happening is trends across the country, not just North Reading, not just the state, but across the country, we're seeing youth become addicted to nicotine through vape. And then once their vape access got restricted, especially in this town, by the way, it has very strict regulations, that they switch to whatever they get their hands on, including combustible cigarettes, oftentimes creating what's called a dual-use user, where somebody might vape inside, go outside, and light up. So we are not surprised to see that go up, and we will be engaging our regional partners to, to combat that.
Good.
Yes.
So on your last point, are the, are the very strict measures counterproductive?
That's a great question, and that's something that we have to think about. And I, my gut answer is no, because we know that increased access increases use. So my thought is I actually think, where would that number be if we didn't have those? Would it be even significantly higher? So my gut reaction is no, but I think this is something we can't look at in just North Reading. This is something we need regional, statewide, even national data on to really make a decision about that. But again, what I know is reduction in access leads to reduction in use. So maybe that gap would have been worse.
Okay. Is it easier in your, and again, I know alcohol, how that can be, like procure, it can be harder. I mean, here we've, we've definitely took a, took a stand, especially last year. But when it comes to tobacco and vapor, you seeing a difference of procurement? Meaning, is one easier to get than the other, all else being equal? Let's say they're both available. Or is it, like, are you seeing it that they're more strict because there's such a spotlight on vape versus a regular pack of Ambrose?
I think, my opinion, based on limited data here, is that alcohol is easier to get because they're getting it through older siblings and adults providing it. I, I have seen some data that reflects that adults are more likely to provide alcohol to a youth than tobacco products. And when I say tobacco product, I should say nicotine product. We almost don't ever see adults giving over combustible cigarettes, by the way. It's almost always vape products. Or saying, I mean, we had, we had a family we had been working with that, Dad would go up to New Hampshire and buy for the kid's friends, and they would all just been home. You know, operating on Snapchat and say, what do you want? What flavors do you want? And going right up to, you know, New Hampshire to procure that. But we never see, you know, combustible cigarettes getting hand over. But alcohol, and we'll talk about that in a second. There's a, there's a slide about that. So just a real quick overall picture, you can see the downward trends, again, just addressing that tobacco gap. I do suspect that that gap would have been worse had we not had more stricter regulations on there. And by the way, most of those regulations were related to vaping, not, not combustible cigarettes, although the flavor thing is what really took a hold across all those nicotine products because you were no longer able to buy flavored rolling papers and those menthol products, which were very popular. So I do want to pause here. I have a couple more slides, and I want to pause here to thank the community because I think this is a project that virtually every town, department, and organization has worked on in some way in the past five years, including the Select Board, previous Select Boards. I think maybe just not the modern department, maybe. But you are supportive of it, so thank you. I think virtually every town, department, the library, youth services, public schools, law enforcement, firefighters, everybody has supported and backed up in some way, elder affairs, everybody. And I, I really want everybody to see this as a real team win, that when you address upstream prevention, really great things in small communities can happen. And it takes everybody pulling in the same direction for it to happen. If this had been just a police matter, or just the police doing this, it never would have worked without our engagement in other, in other sectors. And I'm so thankful that we have about 37 volunteers in the Coalition, and it's growing. Because if I wasn't here, we need to make sure that this work continues on without a full-time Amy. And so I just want to pause here and really thank the community and administrative support that we've gotten. It's been great because we literally couldn't have gotten this ball rolling. So I mentioned some of those other pieces of data that we collect. One is the perception of risk or harm. This is the percentage of students that said they saw that substance as being a moderate, great risk. We saw a decline in grades nine and 10 related to alcohol, tobacco, again, and marijuana, although not great jumps, not giant jumps, but they were declined slightly. What we want is these numbers to be high. We want the perception of risk or harm to be high because another prohibitive factor is when kids think something could hurt them long-term, they are less likely to try it. Although I want to remind everybody, because we forget as adults, their mindset is, it won't happen to me. I can't get addicted. I, I would never have these negative health effects. And for me, I lost my dad in January to lung cancer. He started when he was a teenager, and nobody intervened. And he didn't quit smoking until six years ago. So this is more important to me than ever, to have some adult come in and say, listen, can we, can we curb this here? My dad thought he'd retire and live the rest of his life, dragging my mom nuts and vice versa. And he was diagnosed with lung cancer, passed just 10 days later. It was so fast. And when he was in the hospital, he said to his doctor, I wish I had known back then. When he was talking back then, he was talking about when he was 18 and 17. He wasn't talking six years ago. He was talking about when he was a kid. And now it's heartbreaking. So this work, to me, is more important than ever. And again, those kids back then, you don't think that, you don't think that way, that this could happen to me. Again, just addressing perception of risk or harm related to other products. So the vaping non-nicotine, vaping nicotine, and the use of CBD products. I do want to mention that CBD products is, is what is being labeled as CBD products by their perception. So that could have more or less than 0.3% THC. The kids don't know. They're just considering it as CBD products, including CBD-infused drinks and beverages and edible products like that. This gets to your point, Mr. Studo, about, about access. And so this is comparative 2019 to this year, and you'll see the number one place mentioned is at a friend's home. This has been consistent across all the years. If I were to go back to 2017 and show you that. Although I will add, this is the first year that we are starting to see students admit to using products on school grounds. So that was the first time we saw that show up in the survey as a number one location. But again, a friend's house, and we know unsupervised, nine times out of 10, being provided by an adult sibling, or excuse me, an older sibling or an adult is how they get it. Very, I think people think kids break into liquor cabinets a lot, and that just really isn't as often as adults providing the alcohol to kids with the mindset of, is I take their keys, they're safe, as if that's the only risk there is. And that happens quite a bit. So we do look at North Reading versus national data. And it is, study that we use is from the University of Michigan called Monitoring the Future. This is against, it's our 2021 numbers against their 2020 numbers because their 2021 wasn't available at the time. They only collect numbers going back to eighth grade, so even numbers eighth, 10th, and 12th grades, although we do six through 12. So this is what you see here. And they don't collect prescription drug use on grades eight and 10. They only do it on 12th grade. So what you see in red is anywhere that North Reading is not, is doing poorer than national. And again, you see tobacco here. Anything green is where North Reading does better, or has less use, I should put it that way, versus the national average. And anything orange is kind of like it's, it's real too close to kind of track that. And we do that for vaping and marijuana as well. So just to wrap up, excuse me. I do want to, I try to end every presentation with this. If you know somebody, if you know yourself, you would like some help with any substance or mental health issue. North Reading, as you all know, has a full-time mental health clinician. She's mental health and substance abuse. She works in both. Her name is Laura Miranda. She works right next to me every day. She's Island Police Department, but she'll meet with you however you want. And please reach out to her because nobody has to suffer. And if you are somebody who loves somebody with an addiction, you can get help, too. You don't have to bear the, the load, the brunt of it all on your own. So I always try to end with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone have questions or comments? Mrs. DeMora?
First of all, I hope we always have a full-time Amy. Please. I think it was concerning to see those eighth-grade numbers. And I'm just curious, why? Why the eighth grade such a difference?
Well, the very thing that was interesting the most to us is that eighth grade is, they have health class. And every year Detective Lucci and I go in and teach eighth-grade classes about these subjects, and we didn't this year. Now, I'm not saying that's the only reason. That's just the only thing I know of that was different between 2020. And that's not to say that, that Mrs. DeMora didn't address these issues. It's just that Detective Lucci and I didn't explicitly address some of these issues like we normally would. That was different. I think the presence of social media, I don't know. I don't know.
Yeah.
That's the only thing that I can identify as what was really different. Because seventh, or eighth grade does have health.
And then just, you know, your comment about your dad and, I also lost my dad. He had COPD and same thing, smoking very young, all through his life. Have you ever thought about, I'm, I'm sure you've thought about, like, I remember way back, the Marlboro Man. Do you remember the Marlboro Man and all the billboards? And then he got cancer, and he actually went around speaking and trying to tell kids what the effects were for him. Something like that, that they actually see it, like that kind of scared straight thing?
There is some data on there that that doesn't work.
Really?
That's kind of the dare program, basically, the just say no, the abstinence, let's show you the outcomes. But again, when, because we're adults, we don't remember what it is like to think that way. What they'll see is either that won't happen to me, or he survived it, so will I. That's been some of the outcome of that data. Although my gut reaction is, of course, let's bring people in on that topic. It's been kind of proven to be ineffective or less, less effective than we thought. What does work is having peers come and talk to peers. So somebody that says they're within about five age, very specific, a five-year age range, to come and say, I, I got hooked on vaping by watching this, you know, these Snapchat videos. I got addicted, and let me tell you how it affected my life. That is far more effective than having somebody come in and says, listen, I'm still recovering from cancer. I go through all these therapies. So we will be targeting a lot of money this year.
Thank you.
Yes, federal money.
Thank you. Yeah, I am, thank you.
Oh, nice to finally meet you in person.
It's nice.
For a while, which is nice. So, no, it, it shines a spotlight on what we can control and the easiest, and, you know. It seems like the, the perception of risk of alcohol going down as the ages go older. I, I could see where that's definitely because, not that you're serving underage minors, but you could have a party where the kids come over, the parents come over, and of course, the parents are gonna offer whatever. So the kids may see this, and it's like, oh, well, when I'm an adult, the risk of this. Because I feel like alcohol is one of those things where adults have just as much of a hard time as kids, and it may start at a younger age. So I, you know, I do see where that's something where, to me, I think, I mean, I don't know if you agree, but it may be the hardest thing. Because I feel like, to your point, I'm not gonna give you a cigarette because like, it just, it's, you can see the smoke. Prescription drugs are obvious, what narcotics could do, and the vaping, we know. But, you know, well, if I have a glass of wine here, like Dad had and Frank, like, you know, so I feel like it's, it's odorless. Okay, let me rephrase. It's not odorless, but you know my point.
It's a, it is a chronic issue. It is something that is generational. We've seen this year after year, and I think, you know, especially if we get funded again, we're going to have to really engage parents and adults in this because, and it's very interesting. So I just want to put this out there. We have parents that'll come to us and say, I know of underage parties going on, but I don't want to tell you about it because I don't want to have the social stigma of it, of rattle this out. The adults are saying this. So if the adults are saying this, imagine what the kids, what kind of pressure they're getting put under about participating, about telling, you know, reporting that it's going on. So the casual attitude in this town, and I'm only speaking about this town, is really something that is having an effect on our young people. How do you combat it? We're gonna have to have a very large-scale campaign that involves everybody. And that is quite an undertaking, and I'm looking forward to it. I'm looking forward to it. And, you know, everybody sitting here is gonna have to be a part of that as well, if I can request that early, and having a really honest discussion. I am going to offer the next semester, so the fall, and I'm looking forward to seeing how parents participate. There's a program called Safe Homes, and this is something that the school has put out before. People can sign up, but there's never really been a, something to draw them together on this. And basically, if you are all parents of kids that are the same social group, I will lead a facilitated discussion where you all come together and make a pact with each other that if those kids go to your home, Mr. Wallner, you can guarantee that you will not be providing or endorsing alcohol. And so it's like a parent pact. But secondary to that, this is a really fascinating issue. You all agree to a common consequence. Because what's happening is the parents say, I don't want to, I don't want to punish, you know, Rich because, you know, Sean had the same thing happen, but his parents just gave him a slap on the wrist. So I don't want to be the bad parent and give you, you know, a week of punishment. And this is happening all the time, where parents are comparing each other to say, what was the, what was the consequence? So in this discussion, I lead a discussion where we all kind of agree on what is inappropriate consequence and that you all agree to that consequence if any of your kids get caught. So it's almost like a parent support group.
And, and I will, I'll, I'll end with this, because I know we have to move on. But that outreach you're talking about does work when it starts with the parents because I was born in Italy. There, alcohol abuse is just not an issue because it's just not, it's not romanticized. It's just not a big deal. Like, you know, if you want to try a little bit of wine, but your parents would be the first ones to be like, this is not a big deal. So I feel like, I'm not saying that will work here, but I see your point. It starts with the parents, like, from an early age being like, yeah, it's there. Who cares? Where here, it's like this, this thing of like, oh my God, this forbidden fruit that I can't get my hands on, just like a lot of things, so.
And that's one aspect, I think.
One aspect, I feel like, to your point, generationally, you can even make the argument culturally, just here in this country, just because of how it is, so.
Certainly.
But yeah, no, but it's great to hear those. There's no other way to get those numbers, so thank you.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Any other comments, questions?
It's just concerning that our tobacco use is feeding the national ethic. Because I was wondering where the benchmark was, and when I see that, that's very concerning.
Yep.
I don't know. How can you make tobacco use look ugly? That's all I can think of.
Uglier.
More.
Yeah.
It already is like, you know, I mean, it's, it's an ugly habit and.
But I think that's where. But I think that's where.
It's concerning that that's, I don't know why we would be indulging in that compared to the national average, doesn't make any sense to me.
I, I don't know, but if you think of it again, addiction is addiction, and you will go to great lengths to satisfy that addiction when there is a true addiction.
Yeah.
And so when I'm, what we know is when the kids get hooked on the nicotine from a vape, which is glamour, you know, glamour and blitz and social, I have to get that, I know the consequences, but I have to take care of that addiction, that's the only thing I can say justify that, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I, I saw, I saw that with an adult, my adult friend, yeah, who couldn't get her vapes, and she went back to the cigarettes when we went on vacation, yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
She gotta get it.
Any other questions, comments?
No, just again, your enthusiasm, but more importantly, the positive impact that you had in the time that you've been here is substantial.
Thank you.
And again, you're, not that you started from scratch, but we, we've made significant progress, and I think public awareness is certainly up, due to your efforts, you know, bars, and the board has made the last several years to ensure that we have these resources. And, well, let's hope the fiddle gun comes through with the, with the grant money here, and continue this on for another five years, because it can only help, for sure. And again, I think, every year I hear, the time to come for us, you know, the different tax that you're taking, is of interest, certainly, but it's, the impacts, you know, so you see little incremental changes, with the positive, again, when it comes to tobacco, let's, ahead scratch your muscles, but other than the vape, I mean, the flavored vapes and stuff like that really caught on, and hooked a lot of kids, so a lot of other people too. So anyway, again, applaud your effort, enjoy your enthusiasm, and what you bring to the table here, what you bring to the board, to the community as a whole, so again, I hope the program is continued, and if it isn't, we need to take a look at what we need to do.
Thank you.
From the chair, too, I really think that the data is always an eye-opener for us, and I appreciate that you've given us these regular updates on the, yeah, I'd like to see if you can do it this way, and I know there's a margin of error with tracking it this way, but by class, plus of 2021, plus of 2222, because you can track almost, I'm shocked at the sixth grade numbers, too, that, I know you were shocked at eighth grade, but I'm shocked at the sixth grade numbers, wouldn't think it would be that high, but even though it's low in comparison, but you can almost track, you know, the different grades and the marginal variability, and some students coming in and out of that, that particular class, but it'd be interesting to see it tracked by class as well. And I, I mean, I'm just, I just, you already know all this, because we're kind of preaching to the preacher, but it's very, very hard to see not just an adult that's addicted to any substance, but that a kid, and it's almost an impossibility once they're hooked on it to convince them otherwise. That's a real struggle for parents, and even the parents that are already doing the pact with one another, let me know, make sure you tell me if you see this, and talking about it and trying to, you know, eradicate that from the friend groups, this is a real, it's here, it's accessible, the parents are the ones that can tell you who's selling it, and whose parent is providing it to the kid that's selling it, or so on and so forth. Parents know this information, and I wholeheartedly agree with you on two points, parents have to be, play in a much more active role in this, but as someone pointed out, parents, there's a lot of parents that are addicted to all of those same substances, so they're not even present to be able to do that, and even the ones that aren't, it's a, it's a tough road to hold, it's very tough. And the second thing is, these kids have access to information and data, they're not looking things up in an encyclopedia like we did, they're not going Dewey Decimal, looking up a book on the topic.
I'll explain that to you.
They have access to everything, and from my opinion, they're so much smarter than us, so you're getting in there in fifth grade with a science-based curriculum, is, that's gonna be amazing. I mean, in every grade that you're doing that, they, they understand data, they understand numbers, they understand science, that, I think, is gonna have a tremendous impact, they're accepting of that type of an education. I think it's different than that DARE suitcase, you know, with all the different, like, little drugs, and as formidable as it was to have a police officer come in to class, they're kind of the same, in the same sense of parents, and don't do drugs, and you know, then, you know, it's a matter of, you know, who your social group is, so, as a, as a kid, so. But I think that, that, the work you're doing, like Mr. Elia said, and everybody is commenting, is so important for our town, our community, and I'm so appreciative of every, everything you do, everything Laura does, everything the committee does for you. I, I would say make use of that committee for all of this stuff, because, you know, sometimes I get from the members, and I think they want to take an active role in what you are doing too, so make use of those members, and a more active role. I mean, they're happy with what's going on, but, but thank you so much for all the data and information, all the work that you do for us.
Thank you, everybody. Glad to be here and reporting good news.
Yes.
That's good.
Great.
Thanks.
Glad to hear it. All right. I think we might probably, perhaps because we have people in the wings listening and waiting, maybe jump over a couple of the agenda items to get to them, to the water rate hearing, Mr. Gilberto. Oh, we got handed the grades, please, Mr. Gilberto.
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes. We had advertised for a 7:45 water rate hearing. I do think it's important to hear from the Water Superintendent, who's joined by the Public Works Director, relative to our overall water use, because I think that the two are related, and we had that on as an agenda item just prior to the hearing. I should let you know, I've been in communication with the Chair of the School Committee. We were shooting or aiming to have a joint meeting at 8:30. We are delayed, they are also delayed, and so right now, we are, are working on a timeline of having that joint meeting with the School Committee, participating, we believe virtually, at approximately 9:15. So if we kind of, just want to keep going through the agenda, that's probably our best bet.
I thought we'd be done by then.
I do, too.
I know.
They like to talk as much as we.
I'd say that School Committee.
They just go on and on.
To the School Committee's credit, they were willing to recess and come here now.
They might have to do that, so.
But we have a.
Oh, fast we can shift.
We have an advertised hearing, so we're sort of in a tough spot. And Madam Chair, through you, I, he doesn't know it, but I need to set the Water Superintendent's computer to broadcast to resume, so those at home can see the PowerPoint.
It might be a job being an IT someday.
I don't feel I'm doing such a great job, to be honest with you, but thank you.
Not yet another thing I'm on.
I should thank Brian Carter, who has, I think, on four occasions in the past five days, billed us out.
We will thank him.
I already thanked him tonight, but he got nothing up and running. With his two, oh, I think it might have been his two children that got hurt, but now.
Yeah, might have been, that's right. That's why he brought them.
Trade them young, get, get, get working.
So good. Madam Chair, through you, there is a hearing notice, if the clerk would be so willing to read it.
Just be that, just be the notice, but a record, please.
It's in my packet, right?
Yes.
Sorry.
And I would tell you the page number, save for that, I don't have access to do so.
Town and North Reading Meeting Notice, Water Rates and Capital Plan Hearing. In accordance with the requirements of Section 191-16 and 191-17 of the Code of North Reading, the Select Board and the North Reading Water Commission will hold the annual Water Rate and Water System Capital Plan Hearings on Monday, June 21st at 7:45 PM. Please refer to the calendar on the town website when the Select Board Agenda for the Meeting is posted on Thursday, June 17, 2021. To find the venue for the hearing, the calendar may be found at the following address, northreadingma.gov/notes/166/events.
Yeah, all set.
Thank you, and good evening. Mark Clark, the Water Superintendent, I'm joined tonight, in present by Joseph Parisi, our Public Works Director, also via Zoom, Vinnie Rugucci, who's the Chair of the Water Commission, is with us tonight, so. This is our annual Water Rate and Capital Plan Hearing, there is an agenda item, basically, to talk a little bit about water use guidelines. I do want to just point out that we currently are under our, what we call Stage Zero, or normal summer water use restrictions, which basically allows watering on an odd-even basis. And we would ask that people comply with those restrictions. It is a voluntary restriction. If everyone would comply with the odd-even, we would be much less likely to have to implement more strict water use restrictions further into the summer. I did want to just give you very quickly, and I know this is gonna be hard to see, I'm asking if you can see just the black and the red in those two columns that are there. So this compares May of last year with May of this year, and June of last year with June of this year. And what you can see, if you look in the May column, that kind of the fourth column over, it's almost all black for the entire month. That means that the use this year was higher than the use last year for the same period. Until you get down towards the end, and I think we all remember the Memorial Day weekend, where it's 50 degrees and rain basically all weekend, and then the numbers jump from black to red, because the use this year was much less than the use last year. And that trend has actually continued, if you look over into the June column, the June column is almost all red, so the use in 2021 in June is significantly lower than it was in 2020. Based on this, we have sent out a couple reminders to groups of people that have been watering multiple days a week, six, seven days a week, asking them to comply with the odd-even. We're at a state where we're doing well, I would say, this year, compared to last year, right around this time last year, we bumped to the two-day-a-week watering, just because the, the use had gone up. If you, if you can see in that 2020 June column, there are a few days where we hit the 2.6, or even that, that one that's highlighted green is 2.7 million gallons a day. Our contract with Andover only allows for up to 2.6 million gallons a day, so when we start exceeding that, we can't bring in that much water into our system, what tends to happen is our storage tanks start to drop, and that's kind of the most stressful thing that happens to me, other than a major water main break. So we pushed real hard last year to get the, the non-voluntary, the mandatory restrictions implemented, and then sent out, I believe, somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 notices shortly after that. At this point, we're not recommending any higher level of water use restrictions, but we certainly do reserve the, the right, if we get into an extended period of hot, dry weather. The one thing I'd point out in these columns, like, if you look at the May column, as you get towards the bottom, we're up at 2.2 or 2.3 million gallons a day, and then we hit that rainy weather, and it drops by 0.7 million gallons a day, that's a huge drop. And what you'll see is, if you go over to the June column, over about a week of no rain, the use tends to bump back up. But we've had rain every week or every 10 days, so we've been considerably different than last year, and really, this was the time last year where the drought really kicked in. So we're in fairly good condition right now, but again, we'll keep you advised. So this is the water rate hearing, here's just a summary of the water rates, as most of you recall, the last time we addressed the water rates, we were actually here in December, and recommended a 2.5% rate increase, just based on what we were seeing for sales versus the cost of water. It obviously cost us a little more to buy water from Andover, and based on that, we had that 2.5% rate increase that went on to the February bills. We do have a fairly substantial retained earnings fund within the Water Department, some of you recall the Stickney Fund, we still have about $135,000 in that fund, and then we also have what we call the Water Department Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, and you can see the money transferred in or transferred out based on town meeting votes. When we were looking to at MWRA, we raised the rates fairly significantly in advance of that, and you can see that, that gave us some years where we were putting $1 million a year into our stabilization fund, and then the last couple of years prior to, just this February, we kept the rates the same, and you can see how that transfers in kind of drop off. So the cost continued to go up. Andover basically raises their rates more than 2.5%, and based on the deal we negotiated with them, that causes our rates to go up by 2.5% for these first number of years of the contract. So as the cost goes up, we didn't raise the rates, more cost, less revenue, means that that, that number went down, and you can see that the most recent transfer is only $14,000 in this June. We're also buying, and I'll go into this a little bit more later, a truck out of the Infrastructure Stabilization Fund, which is that red $105,000 you see. So we really have about $2.77 million in our Infrastructure Stabilization Fund. There is no real industry standard, it is really town-to-town specific, but that's, that is, I feel, and I believe the Public Works Director feels also, a fairly healthy number to have at this point.
Madam Chair, through you, just two, two things first, the time is now 8:30, for anyone who is tuning in to view a joint meeting with the School Committee, we're gonna be delayed in starting that meeting, and we just ask the public to bear with us, we are in the midst of the water rate hearing. The second point is, to the Water Superintendent, I think the screen share is not conveying your presentation, it's only at the first slide of it for some reason, so I'm just gonna take a quick look at that if I could.
Okay. I take it you don't want me to start again?
No.
So where do we stand right now? Where are we in the current fiscal year? It's always good to look at that, so we kind of keep a track, month to month, what do we bill, what's uncollected, and where do we stand? Interesting, if you look at the FY '20, which was the prior fiscal year, go down to the June, and then the second column over is the year-to-date amount, we billed for just over, or just under $4.1 million last year. If you jump over to the right side, where are we this year? We're projecting we're gonna bill for just under $4.8 million this year, almost a $700,000 increase from year to year. That's huge, and that's really based on, we had historically high water use last summer. Part of it, we related to the drought, and again, we called the other part the COVID factor, that people are home, people were using more water. But what does that mean for us? So obviously, when we buy more water from Andover, our costs go up. So we're projecting about $4.78 million to be our billing for the year. Our original budget approved last year at town meeting was $4.4 million. At this year, town meeting, because of the increased cost from Andover, we asked for an increase in the Water Department operating budget of $147,000. Typically, what we project is, we had 9% uncollected last year, $366,000, that gets leaned against people's real estate taxes, that's the first money that comes off, whatever they pay on their real estate taxes. So that 366 really comes in in FY '21, and becomes an FY '21 revenue, but if we project the same 9% uncollected this year, because we built so much more, it's a much higher number this year. So we built for 4.7, subtract out those next two numbers in yellow, add in the 366, subtract out the 430, and the bottom line is, it looks like, you know, my retained earning calculation is, we'll have about $106,000 going to retained earnings. It's not entirely based on, we went up 2.5%, it's really based on those huge numbers of revenue that we saw from such huge usage last year. So we're in relatively good shape going to the end of FY '21. I know I kind of gave you back, guys, back in December, a broad range on where we would be at this point in the year, so this is kind of a little more narrowed down than that, and I'm fairly confident in that number. Just in terms of the budget, the budget has not increased a whole lot, the budget for FY '22, if you look at the vertical, it's kind of the middle column, all the way down at the bottom, was about $4.468 million. The next column over is FY '22, it's only increased by about $16,000. And with that, where, I, I know I make that a small number, but in terms of a four-plus million-dollar budget, that's a 0.4% increase in the, the budget from year to year. So what happened? You can see there's some huge changes there, personnel decreased significantly, we had a couple of positions that we've been holding, we hadn't filled in recent years, and now that we've gone to Andover, we don't intend to fill those positions, we took the money from those and moved it into our expense side, because knowing we're buying more water from Andover. Costs like electricity, chemicals, some of the maintenance on the wells, those costs have gone down, but the cost of purchased water has gone way up, so personnel has gone down, overall, the expenses have gone up. We actually are seeing it drop in our debt service by about $87,000 this year. So all that rolled together is where that 0.4% increase in the Water Department budget comes from. We pay a number of indirect costs, if you read the, the town meeting budget. Paying a number of indirect costs, if you read the town meeting budget article, you'll see general insurance, $11,344 from water revenue. So we're an enterprise fund. Anything that it costs the town to support the Water Department, we basically reimburse the town through these indirect costs. And the Finance Department, once a year, will do a transfer to take money from the Water Department to pay these indirect costs. We're just under half a million dollars there in terms of services that are provided. I'll just touch really quickly on this. So this was also approved at town meeting. This is the capital, this is also the capital hearing, so this is the capital plan that was approved at the town meeting. We've got money for additional water main replacement and rehabilitation, water distribution system upgrades. This is more for the small stuff we do in support of, mostly in support of the Town Road Program, where we'll go into a neighborhood that has old iron services, old fire hydrants, insufficient water isolation gates, and we'll install that infrastructure in there. Water storage tank mixers, some of you are probably familiar. We've sent out notices relative to trihalomethanes in the drinking water, and that's caused when you chlorinate the water. But one of the things people found is as the water in our storage tank, what really happens is as those storage tanks raise and fill, the water doesn't go in and circulate really good, and you don't have, you know, similar age of water in that tank. What happens is the water comes in, it's cold, the cold water's denser, it sits on the bottom, the warmer water rides on the top of that. So you get some young water in the tank, but you get some older water in the tank, and the older water is really what tends to drive up the production of trihalomethanes. Storage tank mixers is basically you put a physical mixer, it's kind of like a propeller. You put it in the bottom of the tank, and it just spins and turns that water over, so you don't tend to have pockets of, you know, old water in your tank. The next item is painting. We're going to look to paint one of the water storage tanks this year. And those four, first four projects are coming out of borrowing. And then the last item, I had mentioned this, we're looking to take $105 from the Stabilization Fund and purchase a dump truck. Again, this is hard to read, it should be in your packet, but what we're recommending is we have a 0.4% increase in the budget. Typically, what would happen is if we wanted to just cover that increase, we'd ask to raise the three tiers each by 0.4%, so across all three tiers. We're actually recommending, or my recommendation, is a 2.5% increase. That's really to get back to generating about $100,000 into that reserve fund. As you can see, we had a small project for $105 that we took out. So rather than start depleting that to make sure we're in a good positive financial position going into next year, we're looking to raise that $100,000. Again, $100,000, we tied up, $106 that I showed earlier that I'm estimating our reserve fund transfer will be this year is based on very high water use last year. If we don't see that same type of water use, we would not be able to generate any type of retained earnings. So we're recommending across the board on all three tiers, a 2.5% rate increase. And then there's three small, you can see the highlighted items in there, in the fees. So for a meter test, if somebody questions their water meter, it cost us about $100 to pull and have that meter tested. We were only charging $80. So if your meter, if you request a meter test and your meter test comes back inaccurate, we don't charge you for that. But if you're telling us you think your meter's wrong and you ask us to pull your meter and have it tested, and it comes back within the accuracy limits that are set for water meters, we do charge you for that because we stand behind our meters, especially these new meters. Dropping down to cross connection testing. Cross connection is when you have a, like a chemical line that needs to be prevented from flowing back into the, into the water system, we have to test the devices that are in, especially like the businesses on Concord Street that may have some not-so-clean chemicals. We had a local guy that was doing the testing for years and years here. He retired this year. I think he'd been giving us a little bit of a discount. Subsequently, the cost for us to test cross connections has gone up with the new consultant we're going to have, so we're asking for that to go up. And then fire flow test, a couple times a year, we'll get a request from a sprinkler company looking to build a new building or do a renovation and asking us to come out and conduct a fire flow test for them. We usually do them at like 10 o'clock at night. We bring guys in on overtime. We had only been charging $250 for that test and then recalculating with the guys, you know, they get a four-hour minimum, what their overtime is, it's more like $350. So we're asking for that, those three fees to be raised as well. And that's pretty much all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. That's great. Any questions? My colleagues. Mr. Sudo?
So the more we use, the more we have to give Andover. Is that correct?
So it's basically per volume.
Okay.
So if we buy 10 gallons, we jump to 20 gallons, the cost goes twice as much as it is.
So, but, so my question is, besides cost, do you foresee any capacity issues if we use, so meaning when we issue these different warnings for the, you know, how much water to use, is it based because we're trying to keep costs down or because we won't have a capacity?
It's based on capacity.
Okay. So like last year, did we hit capacity?
There were days we hit capacity in June, which led us to implement the more stringent restrictions.
And what happens when we hit capacity?
So if we're taking as much water as Andover could give us, and again, there's a bump in 2025 where it goes from 2.6 million gallons to 3 million gallons a day, but if we hit capacity and we're above capacity, that's going to come from somewhere. And what it really does is it reduces with that volume comes out of our storage tanks. So we could lose three feet today, three feet tomorrow, and eventually our storage tanks tend to get to the point where fire protection isn't as good. If you live on the top of the hill like some of the people in this room, your pressure tends to decrease as well because of the reduced water level in the storage tanks. So it becomes, it's really a public safety issue at that point. We like to sell water, but we have to have the water to sell in order to be able to do that.
So under the terms of agreement with Andover and the permissions that we have in place right now, is a certain level that will increase once we're permitted to draw more with that agreement?
So under our Water Management Act, which is the state permit, we are required to take up to 3 million gallons a day. In talking with Andover, they, their comments as we had our negotiations was they would take them a couple of years to have a water capital plan, looking to improve their distribution system as well. So they said on day one, they could give us up to 2.6. It would take them those five years or so to develop to be able to give us that higher level of water use. As I did mention, that the water use last summer, the peak days were much higher than we historically see. We were typically in the 2.3 to 2.2 to 2.3 million gallons a day. We were up to 2.7 million gallons a day one day last year. So that, and I know it doesn't sound like a lot, but a jump of that level for any water supplier is just huge, where you're going from, you're thinking your max day is 2.3 million gallons a day, and all of a sudden it's, you know, it's bumped up to that level. And talking to other water suppliers, it was a fairly common occurrence last year, but kind of stressful nonetheless.
I mean, if we, I'm sorry, if we have that contract to have up to 2.6 until 2025, and we struck, and I know Mr. O'Leary worked harder than that.
I was along with Mr. Clark.
Well, everybody, my thing is that if we have that agreement, is it really our problem? They got to come up with at least 2.6, correct?
So if we, if we're under 2.6, that's fine.
Okay, so meaning when you say the supplier's stressed though, I mean, if Andover came and said, hey, you guys are coming in at 2.3, can you do us a favor? Okay.
We'd say, no, we have a contract, you have to deliver us 2.6.
Thank you.
Mr. Walker?
Just one question. On one of the slides, you showed that the Water Department budget was like 4.8 projected, but we had uncollected of like 366,000, 430,000. Is that just a constant every month? We always have that outstanding?
It's not every month, but it's year to year. So if you look at it, that percentage collected in that, the right-hand column for the two years, in the months we issue a bill, it jumps through the roof. Like we bill in August, bill's not due to September, so there's a ton of uncollected at the end of August. Most of that comes in in early September. But really looking at the bottom line, year to year, it's been 9, 10, 10 and 1/2%. And it's generally the same, same accounts have the uncollected at the end of the year.
So, I mean, do we just lose that money or?
No, so what will happen is if, if it's not collected, we send demand notices, we send out lien notices, and then we actually lien the money. So it'll come off the Water Department, it'll go to, in November typically, it goes to the real estate, and it'll show up on your January real estate bill. So if you pay your January real estate bill and you have any liens over to the town, the first money that comes off that goes to pay those liens before pays your taxes. So we do, historically, we'll collect the FY '20 uncollected money in FY '21, so it becomes an FY '21 ink revenue, but then at the end of FY '21. If it's your first year in existence, it's a problem because you didn't collect 9%. Then it becomes kind of a roll through year to year. In a year like this, because we sold so much more, it's a high, a much higher number than last year, just because the entire billing was higher than last year.
Gotcha. Yeah, okay. So we're not leaving it behind, it's just a year to catch up.
Correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
My relation to the water meter installation, working like a child now, but getting.
So as, I'll take my hit right here. As the stick in the mud for the water meter, I was the one that said we should just go with a drive-by system. What are we going to do with all that data that we get? It's the best thing I ever saw. I hate to, you know, people laughing at me because this is the most exciting thing in my life, but, you know, getting that hourly data, it's just, it's so much easier to explain to people where their water went. I've had people come to the office yelling at me, show them the graph, show them the charts, and they're like, oh, I should go yell at my husband and stop yelling at you. And it's like, yep, that's what you should do. But I mean, it's just, it's an incredible system.
As far as the accuracy of the system?
So we're still, I mean, we're still working with some.
Do we see significant changes though from when we switched out the old meters to the new meters as far as the accuracy in the readings and people being billed?
So we don't see a huge jump in the winter. Winter times really what you would look, I mean, and it, we don't know what's going on in an individual house, if your kid went off to college and now he's home or vice versa. It's hard to say. The summertime is just so, year to year, so much different. It's hard to say just how much. But yeah, I would say, I mean, we've looked at it a couple times, and we're getting definitely more revenue through it. This is, I mean, here's a, here's a year where you can see even in the wintertime, our February billing went from $693,000 last year to $816,000 this year. Again, it's, we got to relate some of that to COVID because that's, you know, $100,000 on a $600,000 or $700,000 water billing in February is a huge number, so. A lot of factors go into it. I wish I could, you know, I know engineers like to come out and sell you something cut and dry, but there are, there's always a ton of things going on.
We had a lot of old meters in homes.
Yep.
You know, so now.
Yeah, I got to say, we were, and this predates me, so I'm not going to take any credit for it, but you know, we did buy a very good quality meter, the prior meters we had, we have very good quality meters now as well. I would maybe just touch on the projects we're doing if you want, just, I'll give you two minutes.
Sure.
So as most of you have probably driven up and down North Street, you see all the bumps. So this half of North Street is done. They just today finished tying in the last piece of pipe on the other half of North Street. We still have to tie in all the services. I know Mr. Ruguchi was just mentioning tonight that his water's lukewarm because you're getting those hoses that are sitting in the sun feeding some of those houses. So we're going to begin actually this week replacing some of the services from the new main to the houses. That should finish up this end of the project. They're getting ready to start with a temporary water main installation over on Mount Vernon Street. So once the contract is done here, they're going to jump over to Mount Vernon Street. And then we do have the two chemical feed stations between Andover and North Reading, and those are both under construction. The projected completion date for those is sometime around December. The contract actually allows till about mid-April of next year, so we're hoping this contractor will stay ahead of that and will be done with those as well by the end of this year.
And then the other expansion, as far as, we don't know yet about Main Street north of North Street yet.
Yeah, so we're, we're working on that. We're talking with our consultant to design that. There was talk about putting it out this year, but I think we'll put it out for construction this, you know, spring next year.
Good?
Good.
All right, thank you. So do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, through you.
Oh, Mr. Gilbert.
I do apologize, but where this is a hearing, I don't, I don't see anybody who's asking to be recognized.
Yes, I'm sorry. Do we have anyone that wishes to be heard?
May want to take, the Water Commissioner may want to make a recommendation, Mr. Ruguchi's, I believe, on the Zoom.
Oh, my word, that's why he's waiting. I can't see.
Sure, he is there.
That's why he's.
Vin, can you hear us?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Loud and clear.
Okay, it's a little tough to listen on the Zoom, but I've been trying to bear with it. We had a scheduled meeting earlier tonight, and over the past week, we've been exchanging notes with Mark and team on the recommendations. And even though we did not have a quorum to take an official vote, we did have the Commission weigh in and all feel that we all support the recommendation of Mark and other works on a 2.5% increase.
Thank you, Mr. Ruguchi. So now, is there anyone that wishes to be heard? Is there anyone in attendance that wishes to speak? Seeing none, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, and now do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move to approve a 2.5% increase in water use rates and to approve other fees as outlined in the document entitled "North Reading Water Department Recommendation Rates and Fees effective July 1, 2021."
Second?
Motion by Mr. Sudo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? And just, Mr. Clark, it was those three fees that you wanted us to vote to approve because they're the actual cost that's incurred by the department to provide those inspections?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, so motion by Mr. Sudo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
This "aye" thing is great.
I'm supposed to make a pass, but thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Ruguchi, too, for participating.
You're in there. Yes, thank you.
Taking the time to analyze.
All right, so we have a little bit of time, Mr. Gilbert, before the, before the School Committee attends, so we, let's jump backwards to rescind the declaration.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Gilbert.
I apologize for interrupting, but we have the Public Works Director here. Could we take the order of taking for Upper Elm Street?
Yeah, I did want to go to that, but I wasn't sure, so.
Thank you.
Something else, thank you, might be quick to get to. So please, welcome, thank you for being here. All right, so our next, we'll, we'll go to item number 10, which is the Upper Elm Street Road Reconstruction Project we have before us adoption orders of taking, and why don't you go ahead, proceed?
Sure, so that project, in order to do some improvements to the drainage on Upper Main Street, Upper Elm Street, I should say, requires some area of land, mostly in the lowland sections of properties along the project area, where we would have, you know, drainage structures and, you know, drainpipe and, and, you know, concrete headwalls, basically. And that would be just on the edges for the most part of these properties. And there are maybe one or two that have longer stretches of pipe deeper into the property, but for the most part, again, all in the lowland parts of these properties. And, you know, all of the property owners are, you know, working with the town to get resolution to the drainage problems that are there. So you'll see that, you know, my, the town engineer, John Clucktill, has received signed documents stating that they would provide the town with the easements necessary for zero cost to the town. So we're looking to act on those documents and take the area for easements for the drainage project.
Thank you. We saw those as a package, they're fully signed waivers and releases in exchange for zero damage, but it's clear that that's because they'll likely have a benefit to, the improvements will likely have a direct benefit to their processes as well.
Correct.
Any questions of the board members? Okay, so do we have a motion?
Yep. Madam Chair, I move to adopt the order of taking in the form presented, taking easements for drainage purposes in lands abutting Elm Street and to award no damages for such taken in accordance with the signed waivers of damages presented to the board and further to authorize the chair to sign the order of taking.
Second?
Motion by Mr. Sudo, seconded by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. That's his order of taking, we have our problem.
Thank you.
Chairman, thank you.
These people are waiting a long time for.
All right. So.
Your honor, your sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. All right, Mr. Gilberto, back to number six.
Let's rescind.
See if we can get to this, rescind the declaration.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me in tonight.
The declaration of the local state emergency, Mr. Gilberto.
Yeah, Madam Chair, back in March of two thousand and twenty, this board approved a local declaration of emergency, which was an important step relative to municipal authority to act in order to combat the pandemic, particularly in the early days. With the lifting of the statewide state of emergency last Tuesday, June fifteenth, we're here recommending that the select board similarly vote to rescind that local emergency in his motion that has been prepared along with a document that we will ask the chair to sign. If, we don't have a paper copy here, we will get it to you.
Pretty self-explanatory, hopefully no one's opposed to this, but, you know, any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? So seeing none, then do we have a motion?
Yes. This is exciting, I've been waiting for this a long time, for this, for this motion, right? Madam Chair, I move to rescind the local declaration of emergency dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty and to sign the printed procedure.
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just other than, again, for all the Department, HSC administration, Board of Health in particular, I mean, they were meeting again tonight to, to vote to rescind their previous orders too. So a lot of people have put a significant amount of time, energy, effort, above beyond the call of duty, obviously, over the last, how many months now? Sixteen, eighteen months, whatever it's been. And it's, and it's a testament to the people that we have working for us, their character, their concern, the outreach in the community through all of our departments, through the U Services, L Services, everybody else, everybody's to be applauded for the efforts. And, you know, for each and every one of us to continue to do our part, you know, get vaccinated and keep everybody healthy and beat this thing back. We're almost there, so this is a huge step. Long wait, longer than we anticipated, I think, so.
Definitely want to mention our police officers and our firefighters too because they're the ones that were, you know, in the thick of it when everybody else was.
They're twenty-four-seven.
Which that's their training and their, their custom to it, but this is a time like no other. So in addition of all of the other people that you mentioned, and also thanking you for your service as the liaison for health, which probably this wasn't.
I think I've had more meetings with the Board of Health in the last several months than I have in thirty years. But again, it's a pleasure working with them and hopefully, again, I tell them every meeting that how much we appreciate what they were doing and, and they appreciated our support and helping facilitate whatever action they had to take. And the support that the board showed, they appreciated too, so.
The direction everybody had to pivot in, and deal with this was tremendous. School Department Superintendent, the direction that everybody had to pivot for us for the different types of meetings. We can't really thank people enough for, for their service and their dedication, so. But, so we have a motion, so let's.
We already sent the motion, now we just have to vote.
This was discussion.
Motion, discussion, motion and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You and us. Which actually is a good segue to liaison assignments. See, and I, I just wanted, I asked Mr. Gilberto to put this on the agenda because I did not plan to modify the liaison assignments. I was wanting to keep them as they were, so I just wanted to alert the members. I'll do an update for the, for the, the website. I think we annually update it, but I was hoping everyone would just stay put and continue in the service and the role that they're going to be assigned to. And I'll circulate a revised for this coming year, like we typically do. Is the order of taking in there, are we assigned?
No. The order of taking wasn't there, unless I missed it.
Because it needs to be notarized.
Oh, I see.
Okay.
All right. So next order.
No, it's off, right, we got to.
We have time.
We might be able to get to a lot of this, and our next order of business are legal bills?
Yes. Madam Chair, I move to approve legal bills for January twenty twenty in the amount of seventeen thousand four ninety-nine thirty-nine as follows. Koberman and Page, six thousand fifty-two thirty-nine. Is it Koberman and Page, fifty-seven fifty-two, is there a typo in one of them? I just want to, is there an L or not? I just want to.
Oh, just Koberman.
Are they separate? No, the L is missing.
The L is missing, separate bills, okay. Twenty Elm Street Forty-B Project, twenty-nine forty-four fifty. Arbitrator Richard Mullen J., twenty-seven fifty, for a total of seventeen thousand four ninety-nine thirty-nine.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair. The bearer of bad news. We are on track to exceed the appropriation for the legal services budget for the fiscal year. We had a pretty steep bill that's in there. I think the May bill is the one that's the larger of the two associated with town meeting. And just to remind folks, we had a number of factors that went into this, including a number of matters that are labor-related involving ongoing negotiations as well as a number of matters pending before third parties that require an effort on our part. You know, I'll just also note too that we did have an additional town meeting. It seems like forever ago, but it was in August of this year, and there was a lot of work that went into that in the month of July for the August special town meeting. So it's not shocking to be in this spot, and we are going to be going to the Finance Committee with a request for a reserve fund transfer. We are projecting that the deficit is about sixteen thousand dollars. We're going to ask for eighteen thousand dollars in order to make sure that we're clear to proceed, but we're hoping to receive a favorable response at their meeting, which I believe is Wednesday evening. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Any questions? Mr. O'Leary?
Just in relation to that, I mean, some of these costs is definitely associated with the pandemic. Those been factored into the reimbursement levels that we've been seeking?
So we believe that most have. We really had a high amount of cost in the first three months of the pandemic. That's where a lot of the effort went into. And it really, it didn't go away totally, but it really thinned out, you know, through the course of this fiscal year. The Finance Director and I will go through things, and I know she's in conversations with our auditor as well with regard to those costs, just to make sure we've captured everything that we can. But, you know, looking at it, we had a really intensive effort that was related to that, was really on the front end. There's some work that was done in January, so we got ready for the clinics. I think you may have been involved in some of those conversations, Mr. O'Leary, but I don't think it's going to be a huge number, but we'll make sure they're all captured. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none. Motion by Mr. Studo, seconded by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
You and us.
Madam Chair, I move to approve invoice number one-one-four-one-three in the amount of eighty-seven thousand six forty-nine ninety-five to Furman Gregory Datula for legal services for the secondary school building project litigation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
You and us. Is that it for legal bills, Mr. Studo?
Yes.
Our next order of business is to set our future board meeting schedule, and I also want the board to, I'd like to lock us into, you know, for the third time's a charm, a strategic planning meeting, so that, so we can focus on that as well as a summertime schedule. That would be great.
Madam Chair, I think we already had.
Twelve?
We had July, but that's it, yeah.
Oh.
I believe we have July twelfth, yes.
Yeah.
We are, Madam Chair. We, we looked at the calendar, we being Karen and I, and identified the weeks of, we identified July twelfth, and then based on the way the calendar was falling, we're suggesting August second and twenty-third.
August second is good, August twenty-third on litigation.
So.
Madam Chair, through you, a fallback could be to push to, let me try to get this right, to push back to, to push up to August sixteenth. That will be the date that warrant articles are due for the October town meeting. Coincidentally, they do it four o'clock PM in the, in the town hall here. I recognize that'll be, will be two weeks after the, obviously, two weeks after the second.
Okay, so we have, we're, again, we're scheduled for July twelfth. And then you're, you're, we can't meet on the second.
The second, I think, works. I think it's, we were suggesting the twenty-third, but Mr. Wallner indicated that date would not work for him, and I suggested we move it to the sixteenth instead.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, so.
We'll need both of those meetings, right, probably, we'll need both of those?
I, I expect we probably will. I mean, there's a possibility we won't need August second. I, I know there's a license, I think it's an alteration of premises at One Stop that if it hasn't come in, it will be coming in any day. That we'll recommend taking up on July twelfth. If we get any other licensing matters, we'll certainly, you know, deal with them. It's possible we won't need to.
Is that a transfer of license?
I don't think it's a transfer, I think it's just a change of premises because I think they're adjusting it up there, I believe.
So the sixteenth?
So second and sixteenth?
The second and sixteenth is where I think we've landed.
I won't be available for the second, but we're running into time for it that one or the other of us may not be available. I, I won't be available on the second, for sure. But you can still hold me without me.
Another alternative through you, Madam Chair, would be to, so do July twelfth and July twenty-sixth, and then August sixteenth.
And was someone, was there an issue with July twenty-sixth with one of the members?
No. Didn't come up.
Yet, I mean.
I don't know yet.
Yes.
I don't know anything yet. I'm not judging my social calendar, actually, much of my calendar is all.
And the need.
I usually get told what I'm supposed to mean.
So we, we, we have gone down to one meeting a month in the summertime. Is there a necessity for us to have the two meetings in July?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
So can we at least, I mean, and that might help for us to pinpoint better for the board. I know we're running up against the schedule in terms of the articles and things like that, so.
Could just go with August, July twelfth and August sixteenth, if that works for everybody.
That works.
Yep.
Does that work for everybody?
And Madam Chair, through you, we were originally recommending the next meeting after that being Tuesday, September seventh, which is the Tuesday immediately after Labor Day, because we're not able to meet on Labor, the Labor Day holiday. That would be the last day to sign the October town meeting warrant so that it can be mailed to everybody's home for what we expect will be a modified date, currently scheduled for Saturday, October second, but we're going to be recommending it be moved to the traditional Monday evening, October fourth indoors. If the seventh is a challenge, and I know that can be a very busy week, and a fallback could be moving it up to August thirtieth, if that's what folks wanted to do.
I'd rather do the seventh.
I'd rather do the seventh.
Okay.
I won't be here for the seventh, because I have a work, I have work commitment on Tuesdays, so I will not.
Oh, that's right, that's why we don't produce.
And also, we don't, you know, we can move the meeting around any days, but I think, so we're needing to meet twice then for purposes of sign. We're needing to meet twice in, in August for purposes of sign.
No, the warrant, the warrant could actually be signed, I was suggesting Tuesday, September seventh, but if a better night would be the Wednesday, I think we could go with that night and still be okay to get it to the printer if the members were available.
I can do it any night that we, once it will work.
Wednesday the eighth?
Wednesday the eighth? Yeah.
That will be trash day.
That would definitely be trash day, yes.
Would there be an executive session or would it be just regular session? I just, I'm in Lexington on Wednesdays, it's a little more of a.
Well, we can schedule, we can plan not to have an executive session if that works for the members.
I'm just, I'm just wondering if we can plan our, the August meeting closer to the date that you believe that we can have that, a vote on that. In other words, we're on the sixteenth, is it better off for us to?
I think the twenty-third did not work, but we could, if we wanted to move it to the thirtieth, we could, we could do that. That just does give us, that's a long stretch, obviously, between the two meetings. It'll be like six weeks.
Well, that's what, that's what I mean, is that?
That may be too long, just if we get a, we're likely to get an application of some sort that has to be acted on.
The twenty-third didn't work?
It didn't, but we said the sixteenth did, I believe.
So the twenty-third doesn't work for us?
Doesn't work for me.
Oh, for you, okay, I didn't remember.
Is the eighth an issue? One's there?
No, I, I can make it work, it is. I'll, I'll make it work, if that works for everybody else.
Or, I mean, I, it puts us right up against the deadline, but the Thursday is also an option, if that would be better.
That works for me.
But I know, I know that doesn't.
Wednesday, I can work better than Thursday.
Yeah, some of us have work commitments and things on those.
I can do one's there.
Okay.
So. So the eighth is not too late to be signed?
No, assuming, which we are, I'm taking a bit of a leap here, but I believe we're all sort of in agreement on this, moving the date to the October fourth, Monday, that gives us time if we sign it on that Wednesday. If we weren't changing that date, then we would have a problem. We would be up against it because we lose those two days.
Right.
But we should be okay.
You have to get it to the printer and I'll help you write it.
Correct.
And did I already ask about the thirtieth? Is that not, I mean, August thirtieth? You're thinking that's too far, meeting once in July and then once in August?
I think if you, I would just be concerned that we'll have something come up, you know, and we would be dealing with the warrant, you know, looking at the first draft of the articles, but also signing at the same evening, that's a lot, I think. I mean, we're not expecting anything too out of left field, but one never knows.
Well, let's keep July twelfth, August sixteenth, and does the eighth work, you know?
It works for me.
I'll make it work.
We won't be able to put five, six o'clock, seven. We, we really should keep it to, it's not a regular meeting night for us, so we need to keep the regular meeting time and not lump on in advance because some of us have work commitments that we're coming to.
If we're doing seven o'clock, I'm, if we're not doing executive.
If, if there's a matter that requires executive session, Madam Chair, we can talk about an alternative date.
Doing it on a different.
Yeah. Even a morning meeting if it was required, if that worked better for folks virtually if need be. We have plenty of options at this point, obviously.
So just a regular meeting on the eighth?
Yeah, there were more years where we did executive session at the end of the meeting hour.
Oh, we could do that.
We were all asleep.
Look at all this time it's taken us just to plan a meeting schedule once a month. All right, okay, so then September, we will resume back to our regular, twice.
So would the next one be the twentieth?
Yes, Madam.
Two weeks?
Sorry. Madam Chair, through you to the board, we had suggested September seventh, which became September eighth. The customary meeting scheduled date would call for the next meeting to be September twentieth, which is a Monday evening. Then, so that would also be the warrant article hearing for the October town meeting. Town meeting would occur on Monday, October fourth, and we would presumably meet for town meeting purposes that evening with a regular meeting on Monday, August, October eighteenth to follow, that's the third Monday.
Okay.
And then, I know it's far out, but we looked at November first and twenty-second. Those are also the first and fourth, first and fourth, is that right?
When, when September went together?
September eighth and September twentieth, then October fourth for the town meeting and October eighteenth. And then we were suggesting, just going right through the year, November first and twenty-second. I realize that's a three-week gap in November, and the reason for that is we generally are not quite ready for tax classification on November fifteenth, but waiting the following week till the twenty-second will get us right before Thanksgiving.
Somewhere in there, we need to do strategic planning. We missed it, and I don't want us to miss it again.
May I just throw, could I just throw out the December dates too? We had same thing first and third, December sixth and, and twentieth as well.
That's asking a lot.
Just for everyone's calendars, and then, yeah, absolutely.
So twelve-sixth and twelve-twelve-twenty.
Yes.
So it's July twelve, August sixteen, September eight, September twentieth, October fourth, October eighteen, November first, November twenty-second, December sixth, and December twenty.
Yes, Madam Chair.
We need a strategic planning meeting somewhere else in the near future because we're, we're. because we're, we're needing to get back to that planning as a board for the town.
Madam Chair, through you, and just in, kind of in accordance with what we've customarily done, my suggestion is that we do a, a single planning meeting, and that if the board members are, are amenable to it, maybe pick the Monday or the Wednesday of the week in September, between the two regular meetings. So, that would be the week of the 13th. I put that as a starting date, because we've customarily done it in the fall, and I think we've actually done it that week. I, um, as I mentioned before, so that would be the week of September, excuse me, I just, I'm on my phone here unfortunately, September 13th? And I just threw out September 13th or 15th as possible, dates, if they worked.
Gilcoper is on the 15th.
Thank you, I did, I did not realize that. On the 13th or 15th?
13th, uh, 15th.
The 15th would certainly work for me.
13th works.
I can do the 13th. That's Monday, right?
Yep. You, you said the 13th is the holiday or the 15th?
No, 15th.
No, 13th is open.
Okay, thank you.
Gilcoper is on.
This, I'm sorry, so the 13th.
I know this is far in advance, but does the 13th work for everyone?
Yeah.
I mean, and if, I know it's hard to say yes at this point, but if there's something that comes up, then we would maybe just need to address it and schedule it.
And that would be a night meeting, like a, like a regular meeting?
And my recommendation would be an evening meeting, starting at probably 6:30. In the Police Department Training Room, it's a different venue than, than in here. Um, we have plenty of room to spread out, we don't expect a large crowd for it, and we would provide dinner for the members as well. Be an extra nice dinner.
That's an enticement to.
Extra nice, is that what you said?
Extra nice dinner, because we missed a dinner. How's that? Appetizers, too.
I'll send you something, Jeff.
All right, um, did, so, well, so that's our, that's great.
Great, thank you to the members.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Very much.
It's far in advance, and obviously, there's some flexibility in order for not knowing, not knowing everything that's going on with our schedule. All right, so now our, our next, do we have the school committee ready?
Uh, I'm waiting to hear from them, I know they were expecting to be ready just about this time, and I've let them know that we're ready for them at any moment.
So, let's move on to minutes if we can while we have, maybe 30 seconds?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the April 26, 2021 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the April 26, 2021 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 5, 2021 regular session minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 10, 2021 regular session minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 10, 2021 executive session minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 24, 2021 regular session minutes as written.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the May 24, 2021 executive session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Madam Chair, I move to approve the June 5, 2021 regular session minutes as written.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, any further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All set with the minutes? And, um, should we move on to Town Administrator's Report?
Certainly, I'm just pulling up the written report on my phone.
Another screen.
It'll take a mo, it'll take a moment to download.
Another screen, how many screens do you get going?
There's a lot there.
August 2nd, huh? Uh, August 2nd is?
No, not it, just August 16th.
Or leave it, you mean miss, meet it, Mr.?
I'll miss you all.
You can meet without me. I'll miss you all, but.
Send us a postcard.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair, and bear with me as I look at my screen here. Uh, Police Sergeant Anthony Morlani has informed Chief Murphy of his intention to retire from his full-time position with the town, effective July 6, 2021. At the recommendation and the request of Chief Murphy, I intend to appoint Sergeant Morlani to the position of Reserve Police Officer. Um, please see the attached memorandum from Chief Murphy for more information. This is very similar to what happened with, with former Lieutenant Brennan, who's actually serving the town quite well in his capacity as a reserve police officer. Secondly, and, um, I know we had hoped that we would be able to consult with the board prior to submitting the formal application for federal ARPA funding, but I received a, a second notice, if you will, from the state, and didn't want to lose the opportunity. So, we have formally applied for American Rescue Plan Act funding through the designated Commonwealth of Massachusetts process for the town. We anticipate a, uh, transfer of the first portion of the funds in the coming week or so. Our total estimated grand total, um, that we expect to receive is just over $4.7 million in federal funding. And I attached some information for the, for the board, and we'll probably have a more detailed discussion at a future meeting, but, um, there's some pretty good guidance that's come out from the Mass Municipal Association, and I know you get all of their emails from it, as well as some information came out as recently as today from the Treasury regarding the use. There was a grant contract, it was very straightforward, um, really, all they wanted to do is just know that we agreed to the terms and conditions, um, that they require for most federal grants, and I included a copy of that in there as well, and I don't believe it's inconsistent with anything that we've agreed to um, for our federal grant that we get from the Youth Substance Abuse Prevention Program. So, um, it's in the works, and we're expecting to get a transfer through the normal transfer process that our local aid comes to, and, um, expect that that will happen in the coming week or so. Um, and my final note, um, and she was not able to be here this evening, but we do have a new recording secretary, secretary, as the board members know, her name is Jennifer McNeil. She is a, a longtime, if not lifelong, resident of North Reading. Um, very happy to have her as a candidate for the position to, uh, fill both the day job, if you will, of Secretary to the Select Board, but also the evening recording secretary position. Um, she had a scheduled vacation, um, during this week, and, um, although she asked to be able to participate virtually, she, uh, I declined to accept the offer. And, uh, she's enjoying her vacation, although she may actually be watching us this evening, and, uh, she will catch up on the minutes, um, upon, um, her return. Um, and as you saw, just from the minutes you went through, she, there were a number that she was involved in going through. We made quite a bit of headway in recent weeks on those minutes, and I, that is a credit to, to Jen, and we're happy to have her with us here in, uh, in Town Hall. Um, and that concludes my report, and I've also gotten a note that the school committee will be with us momentarily.
Can I have some break?
Not done yet, but recessing, be there in five. Do you want to start whatever reports, certainly?
Yeah, that sounds great. Well, let's do all the new appointments.
I'd just like to comment on the announced retirement of, uh, Tony Mal, Tony Malan, I mean, he got born and raised in North Reading and, uh, 20 years, 20, somewhere?
10 years, yeah.
Yeah, maybe 30 years, uh, service to the, uh, North Reading Police Department. Terrific member of, uh, the community, and very active, and, uh, outstanding job, and devoted, again, during his career here, um, very devoted, and, and, with, with nothing but, uh, good health and long, happy and healthy retirement, and, uh, grateful that he's willing to serve on Reserve Force, because that's certainly needed, because it's a hard time, filling all the shifts and the, uh, details to him, but terrific fellow, nice family, and, uh, I'm happy for him, and, uh, great.
All right, all right. All right, and, any other comments on, on Mr. Gilberto's report? So, we all set, so, you want to kick off board memory reports first? Maybe all the new and board memory reports?
Yeah, we've covered all, I guess, uh, very briefly, again, point of health about this evening, and then we're, again, looking to recent, their, uh, their previous orders, which, again, is a wonderful thing. Uh, but again, they're going to be ever vigilant, and again, we appreciate all of their reference and time during the past several months, addressing the needs of the community. Hillview, again, uh, the Town Administrator can give us a better idea as far as the dates, but, uh, again, request for proposals for the use of the facility, uh, will be, have not already been put out?
That's correct, I believe they're going in the newspaper Thursday, and will be available into this week.
Yeah, so again, there was some interest in, uh, the first outreach that they made, but it wasn't, uh, again, it was just for the pub, and it appears that there was more interest in the pub and the functional ability, surprisingly enough.
That's good.
Which is a good thing, and, um, you know, hopefully, that can be, uh, come to fruition, something comes of it, because again, as we recall, at town meeting, and from the revenue forecast, while golf was up, revenues to support the, uh, cost of the facility itself were down significantly, because we were unable to collect the rents and, uh, and the license agreement, uh, early, and so the costs associated with maintaining the facility falls directly on the entity without the revenue stream. So, as soon as we get that up and going, again, all the better for, for the enterprise. But again, same thing for the commission, uh, for their willingness to be adapting to the, uh, the changing times during the last 14 months or so, 16 months, uh, they've done a terrific job, more regularly than usual, and, uh, again, managing the facility very well for us, so. Other than that, we're all set, just, uh, it's great to be back, great to be, my colleagues here at the same table, and, uh, everybody, everybody stays safe and stays, stays healthy, and continues to improve. It's great to be back, uh, this little bit better venue than the, than the Zoom. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Wallner?
Madam Chair? I do see the members of the, of the school committee are all here.
Okay. Do you want to just finish?
Yeah, I might as well.
Oh, okay, I don't, okay, um, just briefly, um, Forest Committee got together last week, we haven't got together in a year and a half. That was really nice to do that, I think we're the first committee to do live, right?
You were, yes.
Right here. Um, and so Dana Rose, still the chair, uh, they reworked him in. And then we had a new addition to our group, Allison Pulito, who's a recent resident of town, last three years, and she knows all about forest management, and how to take care of trails, and how to make things happen, so. She took her notes, and she's already rocketed to make things happen, so we have a huge agenda, and looking forward to making the swamp pond area really accessible and known and available to everybody in town, which is kind of exciting to be able to do. Um, Martin's Pond Committee met with, um, Conservation Commission to make sure that, uh, that they were okay with the, um, the chemical treatments we're in making with the pond. They did have two hearings on that, and the last one, Conservation Committee approved that. We're doing the survey on the pond, and I have to say, the pond has never looked more choked than it does right now, because I see it every day, so it can't come a moment too soon, so they're, they're going as fast as they can to make that happen. And that's all, thank you.
Yeah, I just want, I just have to report, uh, the EDC, uh, Business Summit we had, great success. A lot of the board members were there, I appreciate it, and, uh, people were excited to get out, you know, sharing of ideas, but just, you know, wanted, you know, I met a lot of people, I know I, I came on, this is the first, uh, you know, meeting I'm doing in person, but I wasn't able to meet a lot, so that was, that was good for me, but I feel like every, everyone who went said the same thing, I mean, if the, if these were happening bi-weekly, people, because they had been so far, like, apart, would probably show up, where before, maybe our participation level wouldn't be as high, so we don't know when the next one will be, or how it will be, but I feel like it just showed that, you know, people are ready to get back to business, and, um, you know, we're at a place now where I feel like, I mean, personally, I feel like the comfort level for people is sky-high, based on what I've seen anyways, where I've been. So, you know, just wanted to mention that, and then, uh, that's it, I'm excited to have my first board meeting in person.
That's great.
After a while.
Welcome aboard, to the board, to the table.
That's right, welcome to the table.
Welcome to the table.
That's right, yes, with your own. Anything, Mrs. Gonzalez?
Uh, yes, quickly, I will go over the Recycling Committee. Um, Dan Greenberg, working hard on the IQ Kit, which is, um, being done with grant money. Talking about separating municipal trash from the resident, pay-as-you-throw ideas. We're talking about textile curbside recycling, compost curbside recycling, so a lot going on there. Um, the CIT Community Impact Team, um, Dr. Daly spoke about the Vision Protocol for 2025, and hopefully, people filled out those forms and will be involved, I believe that's tomorrow night. And house number awareness, very important, that people have visual house numbers for the fire and police, um, to find your house, that it, it can be a problem if you don't. Sticker shock, where they put the stickers in the, um, liquor stores, so that people can, it, it tells them the consequences of buying for underage, um, they're loud and proud on those, um, doors. National Night Out, unfortunately, was postponed again this year. Hopefully, we'll have it back next year. And, um, just want to bring awareness to a mental wellness action team mindfulness series being done with Laura and Miranda at the library. Um, you can look it up on the website to see when they're doing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gilberto, do we have a hearing notice for our joint meeting that needs to be read into the record?
No.
No, okay, so let us, uh, go backwards now to, um, the joint meeting with the school committee, and appointments with the secondary, appointments for Secondary School Building Committee. I can't see Mr. Gilberto, so, I can see, but I can't see who's attending, do you mind naming the members that are joining?
Sure. Um, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Buckley, can you all hear us?
We can hear you, you need a better phone.
I heard about the bath phone over there, we have to get one to your standards. Um, with Mr. Buckley is Ms. Imbriano, Ms. Boutwell, Mr. McGowan, and Mr. Papa Vassilio. Um, so, it is all of the members of the school committee. And through you, Madam Chair, to the members of the school committee and the members of the Select Board, we, uh, the superintendent and I have been in some conversations, and we have prepared a motion for three appointments for the customary indefinite terms. Those appointments are to replace the, um, to, to fill vacancies requ, uh, created by the retirement of the superintendent of schools, the retirement of the school facilities manager, and the retirement, um, of a former school committee member, Venezia. There is a motion that's been prepared for joint consideration. Um, I believe that the school committee has also recommended these appointments in a memorandum that was conveyed to us, going back probably six weeks at this point, I believe, but I'll, I'll ask Mr. Buckley to, to speak to that if he wants to.
Yeah, I mean, there's not much to say, I mean, Mr. Bernard has moved on to tree of masters, and Mr. Venezia has as well, and the facilities manager, and so, since the SFC is still up and running until everything is resolved, we need to have members on there, and so, other members are willing to step up and take those positions.
This is called the closing team, these are the closers. Mr. Buckley, you committed as a closer.
Hopefully, right? All right, so should we call the motion then?
Yes.
There's no other, and, no, nothing further, all right, so Mr. Studo?
Madam Chair, I move to jointly appoint the following individuals, members of the Secondary School Committee, Dr. Patrick Daly, Andrew Campagna, Scott Buckley.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary, and I'll call the role for the Select Board, Mr. O'Leary.
Okay, let me just see, who was it, the, uh?
Oh, Dr. Daly.
Dr. Daly, yes, Dr. Daly.
Mr. Campagna.
Mr. Campagna.
Scott Buckley.
And, oh, and of course, Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Wallner.
Okay, I got two out of three, Scott Buckley, Dr. Daly, who's the?
Mr. Campagna.
Mr. Campagna.
Mr. Campagna.
Mr. Campagna. Mr. Studo?
He has it in front of him.
Dr. uh, Dr. Daly, Andrew Campagna, and Scott Buckley.
Ms. Gonzalez?
Dr. Daly, Mr. Campagna, and Scott Buckley.
And, I'm naming fairly, Dr. Daly, Mr. Buckley, and Mr. Campagna. And do, will the chair, Mr. Buckley?
Mr. Buckley, will you call the role for the school committee?
Yes, I can call the roles. We need a roll call vote on who to appoint to SFC. I'll start with Chris Papa Vassilio. Okay, the names, the three names. Dr. Daly, Mr. Buckley, Mr. Campagna.
Campagna.
Okay, Mr. McGowan.
Dr. Daly.
Mr. Buckley.
Mr. Campagna.
Mrs. Botwell.
Dr. Daly.
Mr. Buckley. Campagna.
Campagna.
Mrs. Imbriano.
Poor Mr. Campagna.
Dr. Daly, Scott Buckley, and Mr. Greenberg. And I vote for Dr. Daly, Mr. Buckley, and Mr. Campagna.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Buckley, or perhaps to the superintendent of schools, we will have signed appointment slips, which I believe Mr. Studo is signing right now. They'll be available here in, in my office, and the members can come grab them and be sworn in in the town clerk's office.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
And I love the date on everything.
Madam Chair, you may want to ask the chairman why he's keeping us so late.
I know. Well, we're, we're even then, I think, at this point. Are you going back to reconvene, Mr. Chair?
We do have to reconvene again, to reconvene again, so.
What are you talking about?
Wow.
We're ahead of you.
We thank you for joining us, the wonders of modern technology and virtual meetings in, in operation. So, hopefully, you can wrap up soon.
I have the motion.
We will, we will plan to. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll be finding out.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
It's a long meeting.
I know.
Yes, it is.
What are they talking about? Now I'm curious.
All right, and Mr. Caberno, anything else?
Madam Chair, through you, Mr. O'Leary's reminded me that there is a senior barbecue. It'll be an indoor barbecue over at Hillview that Mary is in the process of pulling up, pulling together. I believe she's gone through a registration process already, but folks can check with the Council on Aging to confirm. And I believe the date is June 24th for the lunchtime barbecue, which is a great thing for us to be able to have. We have the facility, it's available. Commission has graciously made the facility available despite the fact it does not have an operator right now. So, we greatly appreciate that.
Great, that's great. And with that, we'll have to take motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second then.
Motion by Mr. Studo, second by Mr. O'Leary. All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. All right.